Can you unmute and talk? We wanted to see if it works here.
Speak up, speak up. You need to speak up. We can't hardly hear you. Can you hear us?
All right. Can't hear me now?
Thanks. Can you hear us fine?
Yep.
Great, thanks.
No problem. Yeah, it was my AirPods.
The meeting is called to order. The time is 5:31 PM on Monday, November 18th, 2024. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, chairperson of the commission. I'm an African American man wearing a black suit and a black shirt. We do have a quorum. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the commission's website, dcarts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at open-dc.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format with some of the commissioners at the 200 I Street location and Southeast location and the others remotely via the Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to make in the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes and hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Katchtank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here in objection, the agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Here we are again on another meeting. Thanks, everyone, for their presence and for those who are watching us on the line as well. For the last couple of months, I was concerned because we had not had artist presentations, but things happened, but I'm happy to tell you, we're back to that. And for those who are new to us, we want to always be reminded of why we're here. So we have our artists to come in and present us and gives us a good feeling that we get it about meeting as we prepare to do battle in the rest of the meeting. No, we don't do battle anymore. So we have a presentation from Anna Yu Davis, a visual artist. Ms. Davis, you with us?
Yes.
Great, welcome.
Oh, there. Oh, should I start or?
Yes, you can share the screen if you wish. No problem. You're on, you're on.
Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Anna Yu Davis. And I was gonna start by sharing my desktop, I guess, so you could see some of my work. Let me see how I do that. Share. There, can you see that or no?
Not yet. Now we can, thank you.
Okay. So I am predominantly known, I guess, for my mixed media paintings. And but I do also work with sculpture and drawings. I was born in Sweden, but I immigrated to the US in the late 90s. And I've been in DC ever since. My work primarily explores social justice issues and focusing mostly on gender roles. It's based on my Swedish belief system and how I was brought up. And the characters that I have developed began before I even got to the US. These gray frocation characters and they are based on or were inspired by my interracial marriage. In the very beginning, I worked only with acrylics. And then over the years, I've incorporated more and more mediums. So now they, most of them consist of both a combination of acrylics, hand cut paper collage, ink pen, at times pumice, and also applique textiles that I've started exploring more during COVID. And let's see, so these are some of, this project actually was one of the thing, a project that was funded by the commission. These are from, these are large scale mixed media paintings that were exhibited at Brentwood Art Center earlier this year. They're based on my own battle with breast cancer. So here are some of these. These are all like.
See, excuse me, I'm a little curious. What's the size of the pieces?
So this one, they're all, the square ones are like 72 by 72. So, but this one is like six by 12 feet. This one here. And they're all also like, in all of these, they incorporate three different mediums. The paint, ink pen, and collage. So all this little squares that you can see in the triangles. I don't know if you can see, it's very tiny, but there are hand cut squares that I put on individually by hand and an outline. Another project that was really successful, that was funded by the commission, was a project called Reality Check, which, this one is a piece from there. This was, this project explored the concept of diffusion of responsibility, juxtaposing, exploring gender inequality, racial discrimination, and climate change. It was something I began thinking about during COVID also. And this series of works were exhibited in Chicago and then here at Hillier in DC. And then it traveled to Copenhagen, Denmark. And I've also, the DC Commission, I've also been accepted to, most recently, two of the curated shows. One was the Legacy Show and then most recently, the Toast to the Boogie Exhibition that just came down. Here we have some more. Here's another piece from the Cancer Show that I'm gonna continue to do 10 more, well, five to 10 more pieces on and upcoming fiscal year. And this is an example of my cut out birch plywood wall sculptures that are more or less like drawing on birch plywood. The third thing that I was asked to talk about was if I have any wishes or suggestions. And one thing that I've been thinking about, and I don't know if you have done this before, but I was wondering if the commission have thought about working with the local museum to try to have the museum put on a show of the local talent that's in the nation and to get more, to get the talent here, more recognition in the US also, as well as in DC? Yeah, so that was my three minutes, I think, or more. And also, by the way, the piece here behind me is what I'm working on right now. It's, you can't see the whole piece. It's also a big piece that's six by 14 feet. And it's a commission piece about Jackie Kennedy. It's gonna go and be installed at Jackie's American Bistro Navy Yard, which is close, pretty close to the commission. It is, the piece, the composition is inspired by Harmonious Bosch, The Garden of Earthly Delights. So, and unveiling, unveiling will be sometime in the next year, early next year.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you. Going on to the public comments. We have one individual, I think, signed up for our public comments this evening. The commission welcomes your comments. They're very important to us. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff would be glad to follow up via email. And so Angie Whitehurst, if you're here, please proceed with your comments. Whitehurst is not here. So we will go on to the director's report, executive director's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aaron Myers, African American male that has balled, did. Now bald, with a striped blazer and a white shirt. I will first start with some staff updates. We have filled the position of our People's Relations Specialist. Please welcome Grace Allen, who began her employment at CAH Today. Additionally, we are in the middle of interviews for grant department managers and are hoping to onboard these new staffers in December. And we look to post for upcoming positions on our resource allocation team as well. As far as training is concerned, we are able, we were able to secure coaches for our management team. We will, this will allow CAH managers to work with experienced professionals on how to manage with less resources, how to embrace change, and how to ensure wellness for them and their teams. Looking at FY25 funds, the Office of the Chief Financial Officer presented a new exercise in developing spend plans. That included forecasting the agency's FY26 needs. For example, arrived, our budget included many things that would have been nice to accomplish. However, we did not have the capacity or time to get them done. Additionally, this made it difficult to defend the budget because as the council examines where they could make cuts or where they would cut based upon trends, it was not truly representative of what tasks the agency had the ability to execute or what task could be accurately forecasted. This practice is common with agencies within EOM. So Brandon Saunders, our resource allocation manager, created new codes, worked with OCFO to create our spending plans and reprogramming. He and his staff worked within the agency to develop standard operating procedures for both P cards and travel along the agency to position itself better. From a grant standpoint, grants will be moving into the new space near the front of the entrance of the building next week. Preferably, it may happen this week, everybody. We just had a good call and that's awesome. And for the commissioners who are here, I'll have you go through the new space to see what changes have happened up there. Once the move is completed, I would love to invite the commissioners who are online as well for a tour of the space. Chairman Van Lee's already had a preliminary viewing, but I would love for him to come and see the final product. There will be additional grant information during today's presentation from the grants committee. But I'm excited to state that every grantee requisition outside of a few select ones that we're working with has been created in DIPS. From a processing standpoint, we are further ahead now than we were this time last year. And this is the earliest we've ever been in a position to create POs for grantees, which is amazing.
How is that possible?
Our resource allocation team, as well as our grant management team and also our public arts team, work together around creating new SOPs as far as reviewing and how approvals are done to coordinate and coincide with our, with the DIPS system. With the, we took advantage of what DIPS really could do, basically. And we tried to work within those confines. So we basically made the process a bit more efficient as we've been working to work with our new post award system as well. As I know the commissioners have been asking for that for a number of years now. So that's a very good thing to say. Now, this doesn't mean you'll get your checks tomorrow. I want to make sure that is very clear. But from a processing standpoint, our, our staff is in a better position to help push those things along. And I must give a shout out to Terrell, must give a shout out to Corinne and her team. Big shout out to finance, Brandon, their whole team, especially keeping the ship going. I'm very proud of all of them. We have worked together with the staff to utilize our new post award system to make the process more efficient and are examining new grant management systems to implement for the new award cycle. The ONE Fund, last weekend, last Wednesday, CAH joined forces with the Office of the Chief Technical Officer, OCTO, and Child and Family Services Agency for fall festival launching the DC ONE Fund campaign. There were vendors, live performances, a raffle, baked goods. I think our deputy director brought some baked goods in the building's multipurpose room. I'm encouraging the staff to not miss this opportunity to support the community in new ways. For our commissioners, so you can understand what the DC ONE Fund is, is when we and government workers give a percentage or some of their paychecks to charity. And there's a list of charities that we have an opportunity to give money to. You can even choose to give a percentage of your salary for the whole year. And so last year, we didn't have a high representation with this, but I think this year, we're gonna have some good numbers. We're really promoting that. Poetry Out Loud, we have begun the preliminary planning for Poetry Out Loud, set for Saturday, March 15th, 2025. So everybody put that on your calendar, Saturday, March 15th, 2025. Anyone interested in participating should contact the agency's Arts Learning Coordinator, Andrea Brown, at Andrea, that's A-N-D-R-E-A dot Brown, B-R-O-W-N, three, the number three, at DC.gov. The chairman and I had a chance to witness a good winner. I think we're gonna try to get first place this coming year with Poetry Out Loud. We had a good, a good showing last year. Moving now to the music census. The music census was released October 28th. The final report was received from Sound Music Cities. That included all our community feedback and provided space for an insights document that may help put into context much of the data and numbers that were reported out. We had a total of 2,738 respondents. And still, we know there were many out there we were still yet to touch. It is my goal to reach even further into the creative ecosystem to ensure in future surveys, we have, we have even more participants. We will continue to update the public on the new timeline for the theater census. We are trying to implement lessons learned from the music census so that we are more successful. And I would like to say that with the music census, we got a lot of feedback. And it was important that the good news that we had in the census was shown, but that also this agency offered some solutions around some of the things that were pointed out. Strategic Plan, the team is working to present the updated RFP under the new fiscal year to OCP and with the $120,000 threshold for procurement. I've spoken directly with the director of OCP and I am awaiting guidance from her. Once the RFP is submitted, we will await the updated timeline from OCP and continue to work with them to secure a company to complete the strategic plan. We are in contact with the NEA regarding this process. I can update you all on the final hurdle we're dealing with and something that I believe that our office, rightly so, should be fighting for, that the company that does a strategic plan for our agency should not be someone or a company that comes from some government binder. We need someone who specializes dealing with arts agencies, specifically state art agencies, so these nuances can be adopted so that we can have a company that is actually doing the work we need to have done, not someone just from a list. Okay, that's what we're fighting in this moment. Number nine, communications nomination. And I want to give a big shout out to our comms team in this particular moment. I would like to congratulate our communications team on becoming finalists for the PR Daily Awards. Let's give them a round of applause for that. It's beautiful. Yeah, you know, they were chosen for their media campaign for the public arts exhibition Legacy Civil Rights at 60 in the arts. in the Arts Entertainment and Media Campaign Division. The team will learn whether they have won the category at a luncheon in New York on December 11th. We wish them good luck. And with that, if you have any questions, I stand, uh, ready to answer.
And the commissioners? Well, I have to apologize. I didn't call the roll. No one said anything to me about it, so, uh, I will now call the roll. We need to hear your name. When you hear your name, please say present. Cora. Julianne.
Present.
Demetrius?
Present.
Cecily? Cecily? She was there earlier. Janice? Chase? Kimber?
Present.
Carla?
Present.
Hector?
Present.
Gretchen? So I'll repeat, we have a quorum. I said it last time without having called the roll. My apologies for that. Um, so we'll go to the finance committee report, Kimber.
Hi, good evening. Um, so the finance committee actually did not meet last week, but we have circulated the reports, which I think everybody has. Um, and we are, you know, just, I think, freshly in the cycle. So you'll see, I think, we are only about 4% of our budget that has, um, actually made its way out. So I don't know if Brandon, um, is there and has something sort of more detailed. And I'm happy to have him jump in and provide any additional context or answer any questions. We've got the detailed reports, both, both here attached.
And you can move through the report, the supporter. And you're on.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Yeah, we can hear you. The only thing I'd like to add is that if we go to slide three, um, or slide four, rather, you will actually see all of the grant programs now listed out and not just by cohort. So that's been something that's been asked, uh, of the team to provide transparency on the actual, uh, expenditure rate of each of the grant programs. And now we have a way of tracking that more directly.
I would like to show my appreciation to the, uh, finance team. So this is the first time we've been able to go through in detail. I know that some of the finance committee members have kind of pressed us. Uh, I know my, my vice chair said, how can we know specifically exactly how within these grant budgets, things are being doled out? So not only do we have these, uh, these itemized out, but there's also project codes presented there as well. So thank you to, uh, Brandon and his team to help us, uh, educate us in this manner and to provide this level of context.
Questions, comments? If not, we'll go on to grants committee. Gretchen.
Good evening, everyone. Gretchen Wharton, black female, black glasses, platinum hair. And, um, I'm really going to thank the grants committee for all the hard work. We did have a meeting on Friday. Had a meeting last Friday and we did vote, um, vote on the information that the, um, we're going to be voting on again tonight. The committee voted on it and we're asking for a full commission. I'd like to turn the, uh, mic over now to Terrence Brown, who is the commissioner, who will present everything that we need to vote on. Terrence?
Thank you, Chair Warren. Uh, can, can everyone hear me?
I'm so sorry. He's not a commissioner. He may be one day.
So Terrence, you've been, you've been promoted. You're now commissioner.
You're right. But you're a staff member now, but that just shows, that just shows you how important you are to me.
Thank you so much, uh, everyone, uh, Chair Warren. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Terrence Brown, Jr. Uh, he/him pronouns, uh, I'm an African American male, uh, wearing a dark navy blue suit and a blue tie, as well as glasses and a beard. Uh, so I'm the lead, uh, grant manager for the FY25 Capital Projects, uh, Grant Program this year. Uh, it was a great year. Uh, uh, so what I'm going to do now is go over the report and some of the different highlights as well as, uh, a description of the program, as well as some of the, uh, different metrics that we'll see in a separate, uh, attachment as well. Um, so first off, uh, the, I'm gonna read, read off the grant program, uh, description. The Capital Projects Grant Program, uh, for those who aren't familiar, uh, is a grant that supports organizations that own or rent facilities intended, uh, or, uh, organizations who attend to own the facilities or seek capital project support for permanent property, technology, equipment, or digital assets. Uh, it's designed for training, management, uh, production, or presentation of performances or exhibition of the arts, uh, arts or humanities. For the FY Capital, uh, Project applicants proposing projects greater than $100,000, uh, they must, they must provide a one-to-one award match for any, uh, capital, uh, commission, RC humanities award funds over that amount. So essentially a dollar-for-dollar match for anything above $100,000. Uh, applicants included, uh, this funding structure within their applications. So, yep, uh, thank you so much. Uh, so for, uh, the recommended award allocation, uh, so this year, uh, we budgeted, uh, for $4,785,014. Uh, we were, uh, we recommend funding for 67, uh, of the applicants, which is 71% of the total applicants who apply for this grant. Uh, this is an increase from last year, uh, or a slight increase from last year. And we can see that, uh, this, uh, document right here, just the different metrics over the past three years or four years, I should say, uh, fiscal four years for capital projects. Uh, and we've seen this steady increase in the, uh, awards, as well as just the rate of funding. So, moving on, uh, to the number of panels, so we increased the number of panels this year, uh, from six to seven. Uh, this was met with, uh, positive reaction from a lot of the panelists. Uh, each panel had approximately 12 to 16 applicants. Uh, we were finished by lunchtime and many of the panelists, uh, who were reviewing the grants expressed that they were able to digest the information a lot easier. It didn't feel like a chore and they were able to really provide, uh, higher quality feedback for the grants in the applications. So definitely going to keep that next year, uh, and continue to improve the power process so reviewers can have a better experience with, uh, our grants and grant programs. Uh, the average project size was relatively the same. It's about $113,000 with a, uh, compared to last year's $115,000, just a small difference of about $2,000. Uh, the number, total number of applicants this year is 94. So that is four down from last year, which was 98. But, uh, as I mentioned before, the funding rate also, uh, the rate of which we were able to award grantees is higher. Um, and you can see right here where the different, uh, amounts of applicants over the years, and we've steadily been increasing. With exception this year. So this year, we did see an increase in the number of applicants for this particular grant program, uh, for FY25. So we went from eight new, brand-new applicants to CAH to 13. So that definitely deserves a round of applause. Small increase, but any increase is, uh, is, is a great, uh, great way to just expand RC humanities in DC. And moving on, let's see, the, uh, new to capital, new to applicants to capital projects. All of this is saying that the applicants may have applied for some of our other grant programs, but this is their first time applying for a capital project. So we had eight new, uh, applicants. So we had a lot of returning applicants. So last year we had 27. So we, we had an increase in returning applicants, uh, from, from last year's capital project program. So, moving on to program updates. So the program had a decrease in its budget from the previous year. This is just a note. Uh, we had a decrease in our overall budget for $1.2 million. That did, of course, uh, force us to adjust some of the funding rates. But despite this, again, we were able to fund approximately 71% of applicants who applied for this grant. The request amount was approximately $10.6 million compared to last year's $11.3 million, was the difference being about $703,000. So moving on to the, uh, Capital Projects Ranking, Award Justification, and Panel Notes. Again, we had 94 applicants total. Uh, the rankings were done, uh, across seven panels and were determined by the panelists according to the application contents and the panelist scoring criteria as detailed in the FY25 Capital Projects Request for, uh, Announcement. So panel one, we had, uh, we recommended to fund 10 out of the 13 applicants for that particular, uh, gra- grant program or cohort. Panel two, we recommended to fund nine out of 13. Panel three, nine out of 14. Panel four, nine out of 13. Panel five, nine out of 12. Panel six, nine out of 13, and panel seven, 11 out of 16. All of the panels were organized according to organizations' budget sites. So if, uh, organization, uh, organizations who had a smaller budget size were compared to other organizations who had a smaller budget size, instead of, uh, small organization being compared to a bigger organization, for those who are curious. And, uh, last, uh, last portion for this particular section, uh, the allocation of funds, and applicants' raw score was determine, uh, determined their percentile ranking with their review cohort and how they were funded. So we can move on to the actual spreadsheet. Uh, I don't know if this is a section for questions or we have to just keep on going. I'll keep on going. So it if, uh, let's see, if you could zoom in a little bit to the blue table on the left, you know, we'll move, we'll make our way to, from left to right. Alright, so this is just a few metrics. Some of them I already mentioned in the, in the initial report. Uh, just to show where we are as far as, um, uh, how the budget, the amount of requests and everything, applicants, all these different details, as well as what we'll get to with some of the other tables, as, uh, the breakdowns between how we awarded across the wards, as well as how much we're investing back into the wards. So you'll see, uh, I already mentioned the, the blue table above where we discussed total amounts and requests. The average request amount, which was, uh, 115,000 approximately this year. Uh, number of total applicants, uh, awardee numbers, total budget, et cetera. Or actually, sorry, I said the wrong amount for, um, the average. Uh, so if you see in this second table right here, the one below the blue table, we have the applications broken down according to wards. You will see that there was a decrease in the number of applications across wards one, two, and three. However, we did see an increase in the number of, of applications that were submitted across wards five, six, and eight. A small increase, but again, any increase is a, uh, is a good thing. Uh, if you go, uh, if you scroll back up right quick and go to a little bit to the right, uh, you'll see a breakdown of the applications, uh, in their request amounts. So in this orange table right here, you'll see, uh, how many applications we received from each ward, uh, as well as the, uh, percentage of their makeup, uh, uh, for the overall, uh, total amount of applications that were submitted. You'll also see under requests, the total amount of requests each ward, uh, applicants from, from those wards, uh, uh, ask for this year, uh, and you'll see the percentage breakdown of how much of those requests made up of the total, uh, total ask. Uh, again, the average request was about $113,000. Uh, the total ask was four point, approximately $4.7 million. Um, and once everything was said and done and we allocated the funds, the, uh, recommended the funding amounts, we were left over with about $100.
So, so Terrence, I have a question. Uh, as best we can tell, if the question is, are we distributing the money equitably across the wards? Are we comfortable that we're doing that?
Yes, and actually that's a good segue, uh, uh, to this next table. If you scroll over to the right a little bit, to the green table. Yep, there you go. So, um, uh, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Uh, uh, so this is a breakdown of, uh, a good indication of how we're being equitable across the wards. So if you can see, um, you'll see the total applications that were actually awarded across each ward. And then if you look at this column, uh, the percentage, um, uh, if you see that percentage, uh, amount, uh, now, you'll see how we are funding across different wards. And you'll see a lot of 70%, 60%, uh, even 100% for, uh, just to note for Ward Seven, uh, uh, in particular. And if you actually scroll down below, uh, to this, uh, bar graph right here, you'll see, uh, how much in those different wards that we, we invested, uh, across the, uh, across the DC area. Uh, you'll see wards one and two received about the most, uh, uh, ward eight, uh, received the third, third amount, uh, highest, and so on. And of course, we continue to strive to, uh, expand on this, uh, equity. Uh, but, uh, my, in my humble opinion, uh, we, we did a pretty, uh, good job. Uh, if you scroll to the left, back to the left, I can show you as well, again, that breakdown of, uh, the applications that were submitted across the wards. Uh, you'll see that in the pie chart that was illustrated with some of the, uh, information I mentioned, uh, below. There's still more work to be done. We definitely still need, uh, more applications in, uh, different wards. Uh, the more the merrier. Uh, but, uh, uh, this is, uh, uh, we, we see some increases in some of those applications, uh, wars, uh, in applications. Um, let's see, if you scroll to the left, let me see, and these are just some additional metrics. Uh, we see we had, uh, uh, the, uh, different returning, uh, grantees, actually, is it? Okay, yeah, uh, just, uh, some of the different, actually. Ignore that blue one. I have to take, double-check that metric. That looks like Excel did something. Uh, uh, my apologies for that. Uh, if you scroll down though, below, uh, to the project type, you'll see a breakdown of the different, um, types of projects that we had across our, all of our applications. So, uh, we had a lot of long-term and short-term capital project, uh, projects that were submitted. And those two in particular were the highest, uh, the two highest, uh, requested applications and where we, where we funded the most. Uh, we did, we still did a great job with digital projects, uh, but you'll see right here, uh, where 39% of applications were long-term capital projects, uh, the short-term capital projects were 36%. Uh, and you'll see, and you'll see digital is 24% approximately. And you'll see we, uh, funded $2.7 million into long-term projects, 1.4, uh, approximately 1.4 million to short-term projects, and about, uh, 580,000 roughly, uh, into digital projects. And I believe that concludes my presentation. Any questions, comments?
Questions, anyone? Wrong with me and this mic today, but anyhow, Terrence, fantastic job.
Thank you so much. Sorry, uh, broke, broke up a little bit.
All of the work you've done, we appreciate tremendously. The grants committee did meet and we had a unanimous vote, um, that we accept the, um, presentation that, uh, Terrence has just proposed in terms of the funding. So I would like to make the motion at the full commission vote on this proposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'll call the roll if you agree. Vote aye. Uh, Cora? Julianne?
Uh, yes.
Demetrius?
Uh, yes.
Cecily?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Chase? Kimber?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
And of course Gretchen. Thank you. It passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Terrence. If no other questions, we will move on to public art. Carla.
Thank you, Reggie. Good afternoon. Carla Sims. Uh, black female, uh, 5'10", currently wearing a blue, uh, top and a black hat. Uh, the Public Arts Committee has been very active, uh, the staff has been very actively processing grants and, and, uh, coordinating some upcoming events. And so I want to turn it over to Kieran Miller, who will provide an update on the programs and then we'll, uh, we'll answer any questions.
Here, Sims. Can everyone hear me? Good. My name is Corinne Miller. I'm the Public Arts Manager at the DC Commission for the Arts and Humanities. I'm a white woman with glasses and gray and brown hair, and tonight I'm wearing a pink jacket, and I use she/her pronouns. Uh, the Public Art Committee did not meet. The Public Art Committee did not meet last week, but I am thrilled to provide an update from the staff. The team has been very active, working on a robust and ranging set of grant lines and special projects. So you'll see a report in your packets, in your binders, and online. So a lot of our work has been focused on pushing out our FY twenty-five grants, so that includes the Art Bank Program Grant. So busy processing lots of paperwork for this year, sixty-eight grantees. So to date, we've begun routing over eighty percent of the grant folders. I'm sure it's even higher now. We wrote this report last week. I also want to report out on the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program. So in FY twenty-five, we will present three different independent curatorial teams that receive grants through our Art Exhibition Curatorial Line. So there's a little bit of information in the packet about those three exhibitions. The first one is our Social Justice Exhibition called Vagabond, and the curatorial team is Anthony Lay and Philippa Hughes. And it deals with the expansiveness of the Vietnamese experience in America. The next exhibition will be an exhibition that focuses on the art of veterans. It's called Behind the Uniform. And that curatorial team will be Cassie Andrews Weller and Moira McGuire. So it represents artwork presented by active-duty veterans, family and care providers, and community-based workshops and settings. And then the third exhibition will be our World Pride Exhibition, and that'll be called Queer Art Salon, and it's presented by the curatorial team of Ashley J. Williams and Abby Allison McLean. So the exhibitions are sure to be really robust explorations of these three different themes, and hope will invite new conversations within the community. So we'll talk a little bit more about this project in a little bit, but the Marion Barry Junior Legacy Public Art Project continues. The Creative Junk Food Artist Team has been working, fabricating the murals, kiosks, pedestals, bust-in website for the project. And then the dedication will happen on November twenty-third. And we're very excited about this project. Next, we have the Color of the Curbs School Safety Program, which I want to give a little update on. So this is a really special project that we do on a recurring basis. It's a partnership that we do with D.C. Public Schools and the D.C. Department of Transportation. So we have planning for the FY twenty-five cycle underway already, and we're working with three potential schools, which include the Columbia Heights Education Campus, the Marie Reed Elementary School, and Maury Elementary School. The Cooper Gordon Park Sculpture Project, we've reported out on a couple times. The, the piece is installed. We're working towards a December date dedication, but we're working with the Department of Parks and Recreation in D.C. Water, as well as Shaw Main Streets and the artists to coordinate. Just a couple, a couple more things. We've clearly been very busy. We've also been working on something called D.C. Gateways, and that's a partnership we've been doing with OCTO, the Office of the Chief Technology Officer. And that's basically a site-selection tool. So it's a way to help identify possible locations for future public art projects. And we've been doing some focus grouping and testing around the potential of that tool to bring people together. The Public Art Building Communities Program, those were approved in September, and our team has been working with the organizations who have all accepted their awards to get their grant agreements processed. So the Logan Circle Community Association, the Southwest Bid, and the Nicholson Project will be presenting projects this fiscal year. So the last thing I want to mention, and it's something that we're very active with, but maybe isn't talked about a whole lot, is the collections management piece. So our team is currently organizing twenty-two different open requests with different agencies through the Art Bank Loan Program. So this is all of our portable works that are in our collection. It's more than three thousand works that we have. They're on view around the district. So it's, it's ranging from new agency loans, adding additional artwork to new spaces, deinstallations, relocation. So we've outlined it. I'm not going to go through it all, but it's been, it's been very busy. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
I want to point out with this last piece, I want to give a really big shout-out to our team that's been working despite some challenges to ensure that all the agencies that reach out, who want to close and need work, and they've done so very pleasantly. And I want Ron, Louisa, to, to really understand how much we really appreciate them throughout this. And I'll be saying something maybe at the next meeting more about this, but we're very just, we're very lucky to have. And for a point of context, our collection management system that's online, before Ron arrived, we did not have it. This gentleman created that system, worked with OCTO to create something that, before he arrived eleven years ago, we didn't know what we had where and what was missing. So really big shout-out to that team.
Questions, comments? Isn't there a grant enhancement recommendation?
I thought it was under new business, but we can do it whenever. Do it now? Okay. One moment.
I'm not standing on ceremony today. There's another thing I forgot on the agenda that I have to come to, so. We're just getting it all done. Maybe not in the order we wanted, but we're getting it all done.
Sure. So the Public Art Committee I mentioned did not meet last Thursday, but basically, they were able to review and Chair Sims was able to provide an update and help navigate a special funding request regarding the Marion Barry Junior Legacy Public Art Project. So there's a little bit more information in your binders and online. But the artist team's been working for a while on this project now, and since summer twenty-twenty-three, have dealt with some significant and unforeseeable challenges that have impacted the project timeline. So to ensure that the work meets the quality standards and project objectives, we have proposed an enhancement to their original grant award in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. So these funds are necessary to address a few different things, including increased labor and material costs due to scheduling delays, changes into the, in the composition of the creative team, challenges around fabrication, material cost delays, additional design development and revisions, and extended research requirements. So big public art projects like this, there are some complexities to them. It's like, you know, managing a construction project, and I think there, there's an additional layer with this project that makes it so interesting and so important, but it's also a history project that required additional research, archival materials, et cetera. So the funding enhancement is critical to do a couple of things, to deliver a stronger, more comprehensive project to the community on our new schedule, to properly honor Mayor Barry's legacy and contributions, to uphold C I H's mission of supporting artists and creating impactful public art, and to provide compensation that reflects the artist team's extensive work in meeting this project's demands. So again, if, if, if folks have, I'm happy to answer them.
You make the resolution. Carla?
Yes, yes.
Sorry.
So as you mentioned, last week, we voted to approve the recommendation for a sixty thousand dollar enhancement to the Marion Barry Junior Legacy Project, Public Art Project. And I would like to recommend the adoption of the following resolution. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendation for the enhancement of the Marion Barry Junior Legacy Public Art Project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you. I will take the vote now. Cora? Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius? Cecily?
Yes.
Janice? Chase? Kimber?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen? It passes. Thank you, thank you. So what I missed in the order of business was to get the approval of the minutes of the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four meeting, which those minutes are in your packet, right after the agenda, the two pages of agenda. So I will assume I should do the roll call again on the approval. We don't, we don't do it, or do, okay. So if you approve the minutes, trust you've had a chance to look at them, please say yes. Cora? Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius? Cecily?
Yes.
Janice? Chase? Kimber?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen? Thank you, thank you. Governance Committee, Julianne?
Greetings. I am Julianne Brienza. I am a white woman of Italian and Irish, and I guess a Spanish descent. And I am wearing a white shirt with blue stripes and a brown sweater. The Governance Committee met on Thursday, November fourteenth. We were joined by Chairperson Van Lee and Vice Chairperson Gretchen Wharton. The meeting basically was to outline the four areas in which the Governance Committee will focus. And those following items are to monitor board self-management and accountability, facilitate commissioner nominations, conduct the executive director performance evaluation, and review, write, and approve resolutions throughout the year, and then do a roundup of them at the end of the fiscal year. Additionally, in the meeting, through discussions, the committee decided that we will do a thorough review, again, of the bylaws from December to February, just to cross-check and make sure that we're, you know, doing all the things that we need to do. And anything that needs to be addressed will be brought forth at the March seventeenth Full Commission Meeting, if we need to address anything. The committee also discussed the, the desire for better communication and transparency towards and among board members to ensure that everyone is afforded the ability to be informed and engaged. And it was expressed that we all look forward to the January retreat that we get to do. These are our meeting dates for the new fiscal year. We're going to meet on Thursdays at ten a.m. And that is the report. Thank you.
Very much. I think we're nearing the end of the meeting. There's a special committee update on Art Week DC twenty-twenty-five, which I will give. There are four pieces of news I'll bring to you first. We've now had two meetings with the Chinese Culture Ambassador, who's very interested in our Art Week DC project, including perhaps doing a Chinese pavilion, similar to the pavilions that do it in the Biennale in Venice. So we are working with a number of embassies, but the Chinese Embassy is ahead of the others in talking with us about that. On December fourth, there's a dinner in honor of D.C.-based museum directors and independent curators in Miami during Art Basel Miami. And we have great attendance already, and some very prominent people coming. All of this is to get people ready for us having our Art Week DC, a soft launch. And the staff continued to remind me, I have to say, it's a soft launch in twenty-twenty-five. It's a very soft launch in twenty-twenty-five. The launch is quite soft in twenty-twenty-five, and we'll do something much more significant in twenty-twenty-six and afterwards. On December thirteenth, we planned a stakeholder meeting where we're bringing together, I think, all of those who participated, and it's probably several hundred people across the six or eight months who've done these stakeholder meetings, to talk about this Art Week DC concept. We're having them at the Gallup Building here in D.C., of course, and I'm understanding that the attendance on that is looking quite good as well as December thirteenth from noon to two. So anyone who's listening, if you are one of the stakeholders, and perhaps if you weren't, but you're interested, we could see if we could squeeze you into the space as well. This is our attempt at bringing all the stakeholders together in one room to move towards co-creating what Art Week DC will be for twenty-five, which is a soft launch, and twenty-six after that. Also, at that December thirteenth meeting, Michael Kaisler with the DeVos Institute, who has been hired to help us develop the plan for Art Week DC, will give a progress review. His work will be finished sometime in January, but in December, he feels he can give us a hint at where we're going and to get reactions from the group as well. So those are the four events around Art Week DC. It is proceeding. People are getting more and more excited about it, and we're looking forward to what it will bring to the city in as far as recognizing D.C. artists, but also the commerce that it hopefully will bring to the city as Art Basel Miami, Paris, et cetera, have done as well. So I have no other new business. Do we, do we miss anything? If not, if there be no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at five-thirty p.m. The time is now six-twenty-six, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.